...can express their opinion. Would there be a better way to get a feel for what the community really wants than perhaps a non-binding advisory vote to be on the ballot in November? Then everyone could have their say if they like it. We'd have much more opportunity for some information to come to their opinions known to those instead of just saying, "If you don't like it, it won't happen." It's not a real good way for people to express their desires. And then a question for you. You've said you've been here six times and you'll be here three more times, and it seems to be, to me and other people, a selling job. And my question then is, how many meetings have you had in Hayes or Ellis County to inform Hayes and Ellis County people that this is going to be beneficial for them?
Thank you for the question. The reason that I've said I've been here is because when I first arrived on July the 1st and I was presented by the possibility of this merger, I don't believe in learning things through other people nor in assumption. I deal in fact. And that's why I started to come here to meet with Dr. Woodburn who opened his home so that I could speak with him, to be members of the community so that I could hear from them, to meet with your board members so that I could hear the proverbial rest of the story. Okay? It's not a selling job. It's a way for me to understand who you are and for you to get to know me. That's the only, the only agenda item I have. She and I spoke, but she and I got to know each other on a personal level. For me, that's more important. I started my conversation saying, "The purpose of my arrival here is for y'all to get to know me as Mirta, not as president." That's important. Okay? So it's not a selling job. I come from a community college background. I believe in this. I cannot look at people in the eye like I'm looking at you. I'd say, "I believe in it," or "I believe for the community college," or "I fight for the community college," or "I have advocated for the community college" because I believe in the work that they do if I didn't believe in it. I don't say what I don't believe. One thing you will learn very quickly, when I give my word, I keep it, and I don't say things that I don't believe. Okay? So as far as the second point, I don't know what I don't know. I don't know whether it's possible to have it put on a ballot. I don't know whether, what are the possibilities? And I will say that upfront. And I'm not going to tell you what I don't know because my word is all I have and I only have one last name. And I've done business on a handshake all my life and that's not going to change. So if that's a possibility, then we'll explore it. And that's part of what we're here to do, is to explore what needs to be explored. The reason I was here is because I don't deal in presumptions. That's why the very first meeting that I attended, when individuals sitting at the table and Dr. Woodburn was there and he can attest to it, people started to talk and I said, "Wait, before we go any further, we need to make sure that these meetings are going to be properly communicated to the citizens of this city and that there will be transparency." That's all I can do. And if that is what you wish to do, then we will explore it. I am not going to give you my word that it's going to happen because I don't know that it can. I don't know enough about Kansas Legislature or statute, but I will tell you that we will explore it. That's the best that I can do. And it's the best that I can do as far as for you all to get to know me.
And then I did have the question, how many of these meetings have occurred in Hayes and Ellis County to tell them that it's going to be beneficial for everyone?
Meetings like this have not occurred. No, sir, they have not. Because the meetings that have taken place have been within the Fort Hayes community because the concerns that were voiced earlier, where's, I lost, I guess she left, by the faculty, you know? How is the faculty going to embrace us? So the people of the two institutions are the ones that need to get to know each other. And so I can tell you that the faculty and the staff of Fort Hayes are very excited because many of the alumni are here, many of the people like you have started working one place, so it's one culture. And that's where we started. Have I had this sort of town meeting? No, sir. But the reason again is because I'm going out into the Hayes community so they can get to know me as Mirta. The reason that this town meeting is here today is because there were questions, nobody had seen me, and this was an opportunity that rather than having a one-on-one meeting with, which oh, by the way, I welcome, like I did with your trustee, this was a good way for everybody to hear me and to see me. So no, we haven't had a forum like that. Yes?
We had a question over here. We've been waiting very patiently.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for making that statement. We want to answer the questions that you don't want to hear. I have a couple of questions that have come from some constituents about this program. It sounds like this has been in the planning stages for a while. So what face-to-face bachelor programs might be offered in Dodge and how will they be determined?
I can answer that question. And the reason for it is simple. We don't have access right now to the data of our student body. Normally, there are various programs, primarily prescriptive analytics, that take the data, that take the graduation, that take the majors of students and project them out so that you're able to tell that, humor me, let's say that 800 students are graduating with a major in education, with an associate's degree, or with a major in business. Well, obviously, there is a need for that major to continue on. So the data will tell us what it is, what are the programs that we need to bring into town. We have a couple of years to run those regression analysis. You know, I deal in fact. We're not just going to say, "Oh gee, I like this," or "Oh gee, I like that." We need to make strategic decisions to be able to create a sustainable enterprise. A part of that strategic decision-making is using data, which the university gathers as part of its quality assurance accreditation purposes. I'm using that data to make the right decisions for the next set of the upper division.
Second question, this is kind of legislating, just reading what I represent as for community colleges. So the question's been posed to me, if this group is looking for some special legislation, is this to affect just Dodge City Community College, but the whole, entire community college system in the state of Kansas?
Sir, the way that I understand it, and I'll let Dr. Hammond, who has worked specifically for the last three years on that, the way that I understand it is that the enabling legislation will be such that it will benefit all of the community colleges in Kansas. This is not just specific for us. And that the community colleges have voiced the fact that they would be in support of this enabling legislation that would give them more flexibility as how to use their funding to meet the needs of their students and their constituents.
And that's, yeah. And that's, those discussions are currently going on right now. Those discussions are currently going on right now. We're trying to, in fact, Dr. Martin has invited the presidents and the chairmans of the board of the other community colleges to luncheon, to sit down and talk about how we can use this opportunity to benefit the other community colleges as well with some of the flexibility. Now, we are not going to be asking for $10 million building for each of the community colleges and we're not going to be asking for $5 million in state general fund. The appropriation side is only going to benefit Dodge City, but the flexibility and some of the other proposed changes, if the community colleges think it will benefit all of them, then we will include that flexibility for all of them.
My name's Michael Miller. I'm a Dodge City resident in Kanshaire. I have two questions. The first one is, what percentage of current Dodge City Community College faculty will have the requisite qualifications to retain their jobs after the merger? That's the first question.
Do you want to address them one by one?
I'll give you the second question, I guess, right now too. The second question is, is it true that all Fort Hayes upper division instruction will be through distance learning, that is via computer? So you have Dodge City Community College people sitting in class, interacting with a remote instructor. And if it's not true, then how many, how many faculty do you expect to have from Fort Hayes brought to Dodge City to be physically present here and provide instruction to our community?
Thank you. So the first question is, what percentage of faculty will be qualified to teach under the upper division? What we have said all along is, any faculty who meets the prevailing standards set forward by the HLC will continue to be accredited and able to teach at Dodge City Community College after this merger. I cannot tell you the percentage because I have not been, Fort Hayes has not been provided with the vate of any of the faculty. However, if the faculty are accredited or able to teach under the credentialing status for the HLC, then they will continue to teach. Nothing will change. Okay, nothing.
But that doesn't answer my question.
Okay, I don't.
It doesn't answer at all. The question was, what percentage of current Dodge City Community College faculty will have the requisite qualifications to retain their jobs? Not necessarily to teach in the upper division, but just to keep their jobs at all. And I can't believe that isn't public information, that you can't find out what the professors here that are now here, what their qualifications are, if they're going to be able to retain their employment or not. I mean, you have an answer to that question?
What I'm saying is that if Dodge City Community College currently employs faculty and they have under Dodge City Community College the requisites to teach currently at Dodge City Community College, then they are meeting the standards set by the HLC for the lower division by Dodge City Community College. That is the case as long as the standards, the accreditation is being manned by the HLC, then 100% of those faculty will retain their job. And it's what we have said all along. If you, if the Dodge City faculty meet the accreditation standards for teaching at Dodge City set by the HLC, after the merger, 100% of those faculty who are accredited to teach under the HLC guideline will retain their employment.
So you don't see much, you don't see a substantial possibility of significant job loss then? Is that what you're saying?
Sir, I don't see any job loss. Why the opposite? I see job creation, which will address your second question. Okay? Let me again reiterate this. If the faculty who are teaching at Dodge City Community College currently meet the prerequisite established by the HLC to teach in a community college, then those faculty will be able to continue to teach under the current structure. Okay? Under the proposed structure. Okay? The second question was...
I'll take it a little time is better. You're right. And the second one is just simply, is it true that all Fort Hayes upper division instruction will be handled only through distance learning where the students will be here but the instructors will be at Fort Hayes? And if that's not true, approximately how many Fort Hayes faculty do you expect to bring down here to be physically present to give instruction personally to the Dodge City students?
Thank you. So I'll take the last one first. I don't expect to have any Hayes, Fort Hayes faculty down here at Dodge City teaching Dodge City courses because what I would expect is that I will be hiring Dodge City citizens or attracting faculty to Dodge City to be able to teach the onsite courses. As far as how many we will teach, it goes back to what was asked previously. I cannot do that, I cannot tell you that because it's all based on the demand. And then the first question is, will instruction be solely online? No. The reason for the merger is so that we have legs on the ground, so that we have a presence, so that we are able to touch people. Will there be some faculty at Hayes that may want to come down here? Certainly. But you know, it's an hour and 45 minutes drive each way. It doesn't make sense because part of being a faculty is being around for advising, to hear the students, to meet the concerns, to be part of the community. So what I would foresee, and it's to be able to hire faculty to teach in the upper division courses. I also foresee the possibility that some of your faculty may be well-qualified to teach upper division courses who are currently only teaching lower division courses. And if they want to do that, they certainly will have first right of refusal to say, "Yes, I want to teach," or "No, I don't want to teach." I'm not going to bring somebody in from the outside when somebody on the inside is qualified to do it. The bottom line is, as long as it meets the prevailing standard set forward by the HLC, faculty who are teaching today will be able to teach under the new structure. Faculty who have credentials today under the new structure, who may have the credential to teach in the upper division, are able to do so. We will have legs on the ground and for those programs where we have demand for and we have people and we have students, we will hire faculty to meet that demand. Yes, ma'am?
And I'm employed for Fort Hayes State University. And respectfully, I want to take it off right now because what I want to talk to you about is as a student, I hear everybody's voices here and I can understand that everybody has a take in here. I hear some all-time residents, county commissioners maybe, faculty and staff. But as a student, I graduated from Fort Hayes State University with my master's degree back in 2002. And I just want to give you a little bit of what, and one of many students, thinking, considering, or goes through their mind. As a single mother, when, well, my husband was away in school, I transferred from another university out of the state. And then the only way for me as a student to complete a degree was to look at a university, four-year university. There was no way that in Garden City, Kansas, I would be able to finish what I started six, seven years before. So my goals ended right there. Then I thought, why don't we have a four-year university close by? Why do I have to relocate to another city that I don't have any ties to? I don't have any jobs. I mean, you might not have a job for me, a family. So I thought, well, then I'm done. That's it for me. I don't have the money. So what am I going to do? One way or the other, I knew that, just like every other student, we need to fulfill and meet our goals. We want to do something with our lives. And I ended up driving to Hayes every day. I would get up at 3:00 in the morning, drive by 4:00, and be at my class at 7:00, 8:00. I did that a whole semester. And one day, I almost killed myself on the road, driving to Hayes, driving back because I was tired. I was sleeping. So my mother, who was babysitting, she said, "No, stay there." So I paid $30 for a motel to sleep there, Monday through Friday, and then I would head back home and be with my two daughters, six and nine, at the time. It is hard for many students. And all I'm asking you today is, let's hear from them and consider the students' needs and what this would bring as a potential to them in obtaining a degree, finishing their goals. Let's hear from that too and hear that it would be very beneficial for many students in Kansas and in southwest Kansas. Thank you.
I was wondering who is on the Strategic Planning Committee that's from Dodge City if we have questions or want to visit with them? Dr. Woodburn, would you like to...
Yes, Chairman Coleman and I'm the vice chair. We'll both be on it. Dr. Woodburn is a member of the Steering Committee. Dr. Hammond, let's see who else we have. Pat Russell and... Ben Irvin. Who's the chair from, who's the chair from Board of Regents?
I'll know where I can go.
It's a big group.
And there will be a website that will, there will be a website that if you go onto it, the names of those committee members will also be listed on there.
Okay. There is a website so that the names of the committee members of the Steering Committee and then the subcommittees will be listed there for you to be able to contact them as well, and that's one-to-one, as well as then of course the ability for you to write your questions.
And then will our board now have any kind of work session to come up to speed on everything that's going on and what's happened? I don't believe they have one.
Here's your board vice chair. I'm not going to speak for him. Do you hear the question?
There'll be plenty of opportunities for the Board of Trustees to deal with these issues. The main thing is we have to get the committee reports so that we have the data and we can make informed decisions. That's the main thing. I just want to, very quick, Fort James did a very good job of giving the minority report to the board. I like giving majority report to the board. That is enthusiastic support for the merger. And in regards to the community enrollment, I delivered to the Board of Regents a couple months ago resolutions from the Ford County Commission, from the City Commission at Dodge City, and from the Board of Education, Unified School District, in support of the merger. Thank you.
I just want to comment that I'm certainly available to anyone. All you have to do is call me, give my office a call, and Carla will welcome your call and I will return your call. So, and Dr. Martin and I will be working very closely together on all of these issues. I want to tell you how I feel. If you look out there five to 10 years ago and we have a Regents University in this community, it will be fantastic as long as it's done right, as long as our Steering Committee puts this together where this community college and its functions stay intact. Because we can't abandon this community. We can't not pay attention to our kids and their only way to get an education. And you heard one of our students just a minute ago, and there are thousands of them and thousands of them to come. And we need to make this happen and do it right. Our functions are what's important, Ed. Our functions have to stay intact. We have to do two-year certificates, technical certificates to get these kids jobs. We have to prepare kids with all of this development, Ed. We have a lot of kids that, they don't even speak English when we get them. And we have a responsibility to them. And so it's our functions, Ed.
Right. Somebody, some people misunderstood, I think, when you said the community college needs to stay intact.
It's, our functions need to stay intact. The things that we do as a community college, and Dr. Martin totally agrees with me, we've had this discussion several times. And we have to do that. And we would be doing this community a great disservice. And it's like Ed said, tuition needs to stay low and cheap like it is now for our students. And we need to give these Ford County kids a lot of scholarships because our people have paid for them. And we also need an athletic program because we don't have an athletic program and the whole thing falls apart and we don't have enough students to make it work. And there's nothing to do. So we just need to do it all. We need to do what we're doing and add on top of it. Add this baccalaureate program, add the technical four-year program like Ed's talking about, get some industry people, increase our population. But count their five or seven years, 10 years, wow. I just love the look of it.
And let me echo this. I was one of those kids he talked about that didn't speak English when they went to school. And were it not for education, I wouldn't be here. And the one word that I can give you and that I will keep is the fact that we will continue to meet the needs of this community, of its people, regardless of whether they need the certificate, regardless of whether they're looking for the baccalaureate as an ONRAM to get the, getting the associates at the ONRAM to get the baccalaureate. We need to meet that. And I would hope that if you Google me and you look at the work that I've done for the community colleges in Virginia, you will know that I am sincere in my words regarding the value of what community college brings to the communities and the people they serve, and my commitment to support those values and those practices and ensure that the ONRAM of education, the functions that the community college now serves, stay alive and well.
Well, on behalf of myself and I think some others here too, we came today not that we're totally opposed, it was just that we were in the middle and didn't know where we wanted to be. But with the thought of Dodge City maybe being the first town to have this program is an outstanding idea if it can be done correctly.
And you're right. And I talked about it, you know? I don't believe in building the airplane and flight. I mean, we've got to go ahead, the devil is in the detail. You know, again, I'm going to repeat myself, but I think it's important. I cannot make, I cannot speak as to what happened before. I can only speak what's going to happen going forward. And the reason that I'm here, and the reason that I'm here often is so that, because I understand, that's all I heard, that people didn't know, that the communications were not open. Okay? And I aim to change that. This is not a sales job. Okay? This is what I believe that can work. And it's not my way or the roadway. It's our way. And we need to have an input into how that foundation is being built. And that's why I'm here, to listen. And as you just heard, when I don't know, I won't tell you I don't know. I will find out about it and I will come back. I'm not going to tell you something that I don't know. Sir, I know you've been waiting. That doesn't work.
I think that, I think you'd get along better if you had some representation.
It's, that's just...
If you had some representation on your head. Would it be possible to have some representation from our community on the Hayes Board to represent us every year? I feel like we're losing our control. I think we need somebody from this community on the... I think we need somebody from this community on the board with Hays to retain our college here. And I would sure welcome the chance to serve.
I appreciate your willingness to volunteer. As far as having representation, the local board will stay, the local board will stay intact. So you will have a local board representation right here in Hays. There will be a local board for the community college, the current Board of Trustees, as I understand the, and again, it's all in the works, that has to be flushed out. But as I understand it, the elected Board of Trustees would transition into a local board that will remain watchful over what's happening at Dodge, at Ford Hays at Dodge City. Okay? So then you will have that representation. I don't have a board, so I don't quite know how we would, you know, to answer your question, for you to serve on the Hays, on the Ford Hays side board, Ford Hays as it stands right now doesn't have a board. That doesn't mean that perhaps we don't have a board in the future and certainly, you know, under, under the proposed state system maybe.
Maybe we can verify that a little bit.
All the state institutions are under the Board of Regents who actually are the board of control for those state institutions. So what that, that you're suggesting would be that this board also have the option or the privilege of being advisory to the Board of Regents for this concept?
Is that, is that right? That may be, again, I...
There is actually a Dodge City citizen on the Board of Regents, Shane, who serves on that board.
So that would be your, your elected, that would be the appointed representative to meet the needs of the constituents in this area.
Nobody's, nobody's said anything yet now about whether our taxes will go up if we merge. I personally pay a chunk of money for education in Ford County. And it goes to three school districts, the junior college, and is the taxes going to go up or not?
No, sir, the taxes will not go up. The reason that we are asking for a $5 million allocation from the state is to ensure that the taxes will not go up. As a matter of fact, our projections showcase that with the additional funds and with the increased enrollment, there actually may be a decrease as much as a million dollars to the tax levy of Dodge City Community College. We have said it before, and I will say it now, this has to be a win-win for both Ford Hays and Hays and what would be proposed as Ford Hays and Dodge City, Dodge City Community College and its citizens. And that means there are no hikes for the citizens of Dodge City and there are no additional expenditures for the cities of Hays.
Regarding the four-year institution, how much of the $5 million in funding is going to be committed to the baccalaureate program?
The five year, the $5 million source goes to the lower division.
So who would pay for the baccalaureate division?
The baccalaureate division would be paid out of the economies of scales that will be raised through the increased enrollment, through tuition. Right now, let me give you an example, right now, in the Ford Hays State University budget, 28, the percentage of funds that go into that budget based on enrollment is 28% as opposed to the 26% that comes from state appropriations. At Dodge City, we would look to create a system where the enrollment would pay for those additional degrees. And the $5 million will be, to be added to the operations of the new entity, both to meet the needs that will transpire as that pipeline... I'm too close to you. As that pipeline continues, I mean, that'll go into, into the operational, you know, it'll be a line item, but it'll go as operational and we'll be able to use it in the way that best fits the needs of this community. And if the needs of this community is to hire a faculty to teach in the upper division, and then that's how it's going to be done. But the monies are to facilitate the smooth operation so that there are no additional tax monies levied upon this community.
That $5 million appropriation, is that an annual one?
Yes, sir. It would have to be an annual one, that's an addition to the, to the base.
Right. And if the legislature decides not to fund it, as they're famous for not doing, when they have other problems, then what happens to the back levy?
That's the reason, as the gentleman sitting back there said, why they rushed, because we're trying to get the money upfront. Okay? Because if we get the money upfront and we can fund it, then we can sustain our growth through our enrollment growth, which is how we have sustained our growth at the Hays campus of Ford Hays.
But you're saying there are no committed funds for the baccalaureate program at all?
Not right now.
And who would commit them, Ed, at what time?
There are no committed funds right now because the state hasn't given us the funding. Okay, it's, it's, again, I'm not trying to be evasive, it's a chicken or the egg. You know, first of all, I can't commit to funding a baccalaureate because I don't have the data that says what are the programs that need to be funded because we don't know what the pipeline is. So we've got to do that due diligence. We've got to go ahead and get the funding upfront, and we've asked for the funding upfront so that we can begin and jumpstart the programs so that through its operations and through its growth, then it'll create a sustainable approach. So, again, as I said earlier, the sad part of all of this and the sad part of the concerns that you all have shared and currently have, it's all hinges on, it will be forenot if the state doesn't fund it. Because no money, no martyr. And that's, that's the one absolute, is if they don't give us the money for the next biennium, this is not, we can't go forward.
Well, they may fund it for a year or two and then decide not to. As they are apt to do, especially if the state's economy continues to, especially if the state's economy continues on a downward trend. And where does that leave, basically, we may end up with a virtual college named Ford Hays State with computers, right? Dodge City Community College?
You know, I don't know what's going to happen down the road and I don't have a crystal ball. I think that where I can revert to is my years in the banking industry and funding startups, which is what I did as head of commercial lending for the, at the time, second largest bank in the United States, which was First Union. It takes approximately three years for an entity to break even. Anything after that, you begin to make money. That is accelerated if you have a cash capital outline. That's what we're asking from the state. You're looking at, you have a community college that's operating in the black, and in two years, you're going to have an additional $10 million. And that's not the $10 million of the building, that's $5 million each year. So you'll have a $10 million infusion of funding. From that infusion of funding, you will be able to jumpstart programs from which you will be able to generate a sustainable flow of cash and you will be able to service your debt in the banking terms. You will be able to meet the operational needs of that entity through its cash flow. So I believe that if we do this right, and as Floris Jean said, it's all in the detail, we've got to do it right. But if we do it right, after the second year, after the third year, the economies of scale from the enrollment will kick in and that will sustain the baccalaureate side of the institution.
Would you, would you agree that community college is only operating in the black because when they need money, they can tax people for it?
You know, in my experience, I don't, I can only speak to you from experience in another state. Okay? I've been here five weeks, okay? I've got lots of experience in Virginia, I don't mean to be bringing it back, that's the only place of expertise that I can bring up. In Virginia, the community colleges need to be self-sustaining. We have a state council for higher education in Virginia called CHEP. And if the programs don't make money, and if they're not sustainable, they're not there. And that's a reality, okay? So, I believe that based on the population growth of this area and the needs of this area, I believe that the baccalaureate degree will be self-sustaining. And I will, you know, we will work with my knowledge of the way we've done it to ensure that seamless transition. You know, I'm credited with creating the articulate, some of the articulation agreements in Virginia. There's two types, there's the 50,000-foot type, which is if you get 60 credits and you graduate from a community college and you earn an associate's degree and you have a minimum GPA of X, and that's set by the senior institution, you have automatic admission to their schools. Okay? The challenge with that was that, yeah, they had automatic admission, but if you were in a professional degree like nursing or like business or engineering, there may have been some prerequisites that you didn't take. Okay? So you had enough credits to be a junior, but because you didn't have the right number of credits as prerequisites to enter in the professional track, you may have been at best a first semester sophomore. Okay? So then we created the program to program to ensure that that was seamless. At the end of it, if you said you wanted to be an engineer, you took these courses, you went on to the senior institution, you kept going, the senior institution could then, was able to, through enrollment management, forecast what the need was going to be. And that created a sustainable approach from a pipeline of students that generated sufficient revenue to be able to meet the needs of that college. I believe that the same pathway can be enacted here by looking closely at our programs at Dodge City Community College and ensuring that then they match through an on-ramp to the, to the baccalaureate level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Tullie?
Sir?
I hate to do this, but she's supposed to be at Topeka at 4:00. So if someone has... We've got an airplane. Let's just say two more questions and then we'll promise we'll be back.
I just have a quick statement and one question. The statement, I worked at college and a lot of people have asked me this question and so I'm passing it on. Oh, sorry. A lot, there's roughly 160 full-time employees in college and a whole buttload of part-timers. The faculty only make up 57 approximately members. All those other people seem to have been left in the dust as far as understanding their concern for continued employment. They ask that they be taken into account just as much and equally as the faculty, as stated. Okay? The question is, the Regents' Second Meeting on this had a legal opinion, I don't remember whether it was in the minutes.
It was a legal briefing.
Okay. I believe that's the one that called for a feasibility study. Something called for a feasibility study. What is the timing of that feasibility study by an independent, objective entity? Because it seems to me you need to know if this is feasible before you just jump in and do everything.
The feasibility study is part of the guidelines that the Kansas Board of Regents adopted following the Pratt discussions. And they established a whole set of criteria. And the feasibility study was looking at, are the enrollment demands there to justify this investment? And so, when we looked at the, the Docking Institute did a feasibility study for Dodge City at their request, three years ago, four years ago, something, I can't remember, three years ago. And, and it showed that there was a real need. But there wasn't enough of a need to really justify the kind of expenditure we're talking about. But when we add the Technical Institute to the mix, it justifies the expenditure because that gives you another 2,000 potential students, 4,000 I guess if it's fully staffed, but we're estimating two. So that, that changes it and changed the justification. The reason why the Technical Institute was added to the design of the new entity here was to make the feasibility study really work in this analysis. We're already looking at doing a new feasibility study. But to get to the question over here about timeline, because I think it's important that you understand what the timeline is. The Board of Regents at the September Board Meeting will adopt the budget for the next biennium. So, then we're talking about FY '16 and '17. So if we want this in the mix, we had to get it on their agenda to get them approved at that September meeting. It then goes then to the State Budget Director and then it goes to the Governor and then it goes to the Legislature. And this session of the Legislature will adopt a two-year budget. And right now, what the Board of Regents is looking at doing is putting the $10 million for the new building in the first year of the biennium and the $5 million of the ongoing money in the second year of their biennium. But in, our position has been, to answer the question, if there've been discussions in Hays, there, before Dr. Martin got there, there were some discussions, not great big public discussions, but some discussions. The number one and only question is, is there going to be any effort to take resources away from the Hays campus to move to Dodge City? That's their only concern was. This is fine to be doing this, but let's don't drain our resources in order to do it. And to guarantee that wouldn't happen, we needed the $5 million investment. The $5 million investment gives us the ability to protect the investments, the current asset investments in Hays and to grow the asset and investment in Dodge City. And to also guarantee there won't be a tax increase. In fact, I believe like Dr. Martin, that there will be actually, could be a reduction in taxes as a result of this.
And also guarantee that the Dodge City money doesn't go to Hays.
Right, right. And the Dodge City money, what Don is talking about, the Dodge City money that some people are concerned will be robbed and taken up to Hays. And by setting up that resources and with the board still in existence, because the design is that the board stays in existence with the authority over the tax dollars, that would be earmarked for certain things, and the white paper lists them, certain things they're responsible for. That may change as we look at how we draft the law and the statutes, but there will be something that will be designed there. If you talk to Don, he thinks it should all be put into one, one big umbrella. And that may be something that's looked at. But that's the timeline. The rush is, we're dealing with a biennium budget, if we don't get in this biennium, we've got to wait, or we've got to wait three more years before we even have a chance to get into the, into the next biennium. And so that's the answers to your questions and the answer to your timeline question. So, the September Board Meeting is a critical meeting for the Board of Regents. And then the recommendations of the Governor to the Legislature will be critical, whoever the Governor will be. And then the act of the Legislature on this request would be critical. If all of those things are yes, we then have basically a year and a half to implement the merger. If they say no, then mergers and non-go, it's a non-startup. We got, at Pratt, we got all the way up to Board of Regents making the decision and they said no. So it was a no. So, that's where we are today. I'm sorry that I have to steal her away, but we need to get her to Topeka.
She does need to talk about her support staff.
Yeah, let me, let me. You know, and I heard that as far as the support staff, and Dr. Whitburn has been very, very kind. startup, Dr. Woodburn has been very, very kind. Uh, you may know that, not only did he open his home to me in Dodge City Community College when I first visited, but he's also afforded me the, the privilege to be able to address both faculty and staff at the end service day. Following that address, which will be not unlike what we had here today, I will have the opportunity to meet one-on-one with faculty and one-on-one with staff to address and dispel some of their perceptions. Um, I had some of the faculty here in Dodge City open their personal homes to me, you may know, um, one of them is sitting right behind me, um, not putting her on the spot, now she's going to hide, and her husband. Um, again, to create a forum for faculty to be able to ask questions. Um, I'll say it again, you know, I have nothing to hide. I'm plain spoken. I'm here to listen. I'm here to find out what I don't know that you want to tell me so that we can make this union work. Um, nothing is drafted in stone. We're going to build this university of the future together so that it will be a landmark legislation, it will be a landmark cusp, state-of-the-art new concept that will push this region and this state forward. And, again, the reason that I'm here is so that you all can get to know me, not to sell this concept. The reason I'm here is to learn of your concerns so that I can get answers to it. The reason that I'm here is to listen so that we can build this university of the future together.
I don't think anyone's, I don't think anyone's opposed to the concept. I think the people, myself, we're, we're concerned that we've been, there's been misinformation, intentional or not. And we feel passionate about the community, we feel passionate about the college. And that's all we want to do, is protect both. Nobody's against this opportunity. I mean, I think it'd be great if, if students could stay here. I don't know how many young people really want to stay, but, but. But the only reason anybody speaks strongly is because they care, not because they're opposed to you or anybody else. But we want to protect what we have. We don't want to gain by losing. We want it to be a win-win.
And, and I agree, and I agree with that. It, it's not a, it cannot be a, a, a lose-lose or a win-lose, it has to be a win-win. Uh, again, repeating myself, but I, I again want everybody to hear, I cannot answer when on the pass. And, you know, some, there were communications that, that may have been had, it didn't get to the appropriate people, meetings were held that perhaps didn't get to the appropriate people. We have rectified that, you know? The communications will be available. I will be available. I'm giving you my personal email, m3martin@fhsu.edu. Let me say it again, okay? m3martin@fhsu.edu. I answer my emails. Dr. Hammond and the, the people who know me will tell you that they get emails from me at 2:00 or 3:00 AM in the morning because I come from the industry side. I don't go to bed until emails are answered. Because if somebody writes me a no, it's because they need an answer. Um, uh, you know, so if you don't get an answer from you, from me within 24 hours, I'm dead. I know, I'm, I'm serious. I, I am that, that, that path that's just, now, you know, and again, you have to understand the, the, the point where I come from. In, in the banking industry, somebody is asking me a question, when I'm funding a major project, 24 hours is all the difference between getting the project and not getting it. And, you know, you can take the girl out of the bag, but you can't take the bank out of the girl. So, if, if, so I advise you, this has to be what we want together. And, and this is something that's being built. And even if this doesn't work, you know, the friendship and, and relationship that I've created with this lady is going to stay. I'm still going to post myself on her. Uh, but, but that's, you know, it's about family, it's about relationship building. And I'm sorry that some feel that they weren't part of it. We will make sure that they are going forward. And that's what you can take back to the staff, you know? No disrespect intended, but in case you can't see, it's a new sheriff in town, ladies and gentlemen. Okay? So, let's just, let's just make this a beginning. So, thank you very much for coming. We stayed a little bit too long. You all have my email, give me a call, give me an email, and I'll see y'all, maybe next Monday. Thank you.
Dr. Martin, thank you very much. The crowd is still here, please join me in thanking her for her time. Thank you everyone for joining us, we are adjourned.